Good morning, we'll call the meeting to order today. First item on our agenda is approval of the agenda for today's meeting.
I approve.
Motion in a second to approve the agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign, motion carries. Citizens to be heard, any citizens today? Seeing none, we'll move on, approve payment of bills and vouchers.
I shall move.
Motion.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the bills and vouchers. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign, motion carries. Clay County Collaborative Update. Carolyn Sternad.
Sternad. Good morning.
Good morning ladies.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome.
Good morning commissioners, thank you for having us here today. I've brought a guest with me, I hope that's okay. This is Kristen Cryle and she's from Reach. She has one of the programs that the collaborative supports and so I've asked her to come as we usually do have a program kind of featured in our reports. I asked her to come today to talk a little bit about the work that that family caseworker is doing at Reach as well as other work that they do out there. I did prepare for you an annual report and really just wanted to kind of give you a flavor of the work that the collaborative is doing. We receive our funding through the LCTS funding. It's a random moment federal program that then flows down through the state and then the state distributes it out to the different collaboratives. In order to receive that funding, you do have to have a collaborative. So that was the driving force behind forming the collaborative 15 years ago. And now we really have developed some strong partnerships with our providers and programs in the community. And so that's kind of our driving force now. I just want to highlight just a few things within the report for you and then let Kristen talk and we can take some questions as well. We have, I've listed for you all of our partners, we have about 20 partners that are in Clay County. Those partners pay a membership fee of $100. The county itself pays a membership fee annually of $250. And that encompasses all of the county programs, social services, public health, corrections, and the attorney's office as well as the regional juvenile center. Those dollars are really just a commitment from our partners. They don't, they amount to about $1,900 a year. So we pretty much use those for kind of meeting expenses and things. We have various work groups and projects within the collaborative. The first one on your report is the Children's Mental Health Work Group. And that funds a program out of Reach that Kristen will be talking about as well as a partial case manager at Trish's United. Which has really seen an increase of children staying at the shelter. And this individual helps families work to do parenting skills and to apply for any services they might need and assist with them securing housing. Our school age disability work group, really their focus has been for the last several years is to identify some opportunities in the community where we can get families of special needs children together to allow them to just network and support each other and give our kids an opportunity to participate in some fun things. We've gone to the planetarium, we've gone bowling, Clay Your Way, those types of things that oftentimes are a little challenging for some of our kids to participate in. The Family Support Model Work Group is our wraparound. And wraparound has been in the state for, I mean back when my daughter was seven years old and she'll be 25 now. So it really works on informal, informal supports. It's a program that keeps our kids at home that could have been or at risk of being placed in our county foster care system or residential programs. So I've just kind of outlined that program for you and talked about some of the goals and things that our family do. With that program, we provide funding for a neutral facilitator that coordinates those team meetings and runs the meeting and then types up the notes and connects with all of the providers to make sure that things are getting accomplished for our families. The reentry service project is something that comes out of the corrections and that would be Shelley Ford that oversees that program. We have two reentry service staff that work with kids that are coming back into the community from out of home placement. And their primary focus is to reduce recidivism, keeping them back out of the courts, making sure that they follow through with any of their probation, school, work, and those kinds of things. They've added a new component in that they are offering some mental health screenings to families that are in the juvenile court. So they come on Wednesday over to the courthouse here and ask families if they would like to voluntarily go through this mental health screening assessment piece. The restorative justice program has really taken off this year. We're really excited about the work that it's been doing. They have been receiving a number of referrals from the police department, which is great. That program looks at helping kids stay out of the court system, which of course is a cost saving, but it's also better for kids. It really composes two components. And in each of those different venues, they have an opportunity to face the victim in one of them and the other one is a victim panel. And so they can really understand the impact of their actions with that victim or even in the community. And then they come upon an agreement that can rectify what they have done, whether that be doing some writing letters of apology, some community service. Sometimes it's restitution. It's really a unique process that is up to the individuals to form. The last program that we really run that we have a number of staff for is our truance intervention program. And that program is funded through a number of different sources because we don't have enough money to really run that program effectively. So the schools, all of those schools in our county provide dollars for that as well as the collaborative, social services. And then we also receive funding from United Way, so it's a combined process. This year they, in the, last year they served over a thousand students in that trying to get them to be in school and to reduce any barriers that they might have to school. Our substance abuse work group has been focusing a lot on the adverse childhood experiences. And this is a kind of a movement within our state to really look at what our kids have gone through and how can we help them rather than blame them for what, for what actions they may be taking. Understanding what they've gone through in their experiences and then building up their resiliency and trying to kind of break that cycle. There is legislation right now going through the, through the governor's budget to actually flow some dollars into the collaborative to do additional work around adverse childhood experiences. So this group just in February held a conference when we brought in a national speaker Laura Porter. And we had 250 individuals who attended that, we had a full house over there. About 75% of them were from Moorhead agencies and parents and, and some of our work groups. The other pieces of our work group, we just recently restructured the collaborative to kind of make the decision making a little bit easier. So we've taken out a layer, which was the board of directors and we simply now have the administrative level, which will be doing the problem solving work of the barriers and the gaps and needs in our services. And then we have the governance board and they are the ones that are given the task of making sure that we are fiscally sustainable. And Wayne sits on that group as well. We've had some very difficult discussions, or should I say challenging discussions regarding funding because we know that whenever we cut programs, we cut their efficiency. However, our dollars have been cut quite a bit. Over the last year, we used to take in about 223, 230,000 a year and now we're looking at 190,000. So this next coming fiscal year, which will start July 1st, we actually had to cut all of our programs by 17%. It was not something that we wanted to do, but something we felt we needed to do in order to maintain our funding and maintain at least some of our programming. We are working with our LCTS coordinator to see where we can kind of increase our revenue and are we doing everything we can to capture those random moments with, with those individuals. But it has meant a cut in some of, in our programs. So that may again come back to you as we kind of work through that with some of our programs that are both county funded as well as collaborative funding. The last two pieces that I have for you, the one is our five year summary from our LCTS earnings. And you can see how it really has kind of fluctuated in what we've been able to receive over time. And then I provided you with just some data on the number of children that we serve within the various programs by gender, grade level, race. And then on your back sheet, it would be by zip code. Of course, the majority of our children that we do serve happen to be in the Moorhead area, just because that's where the largest population is. But we do serve children throughout Clay County. And our partnerships, while we, while I identified those partners on the first page for you, we, we have many more partners that our programs work with that, or that are agencies throughout the county as well as into Fargo. And most of our work groups are made up of the actual providers or case managers that are doing the work with our families. And as we kind of move up the chain to administrative and the governance board, that's where we see more of the executive directors as well as school board members, county board members and those types of things. So I'm very pleased, this is my third year already as coordinator for the collaborative. And I really am very pleased with the work that we are doing and really encouraged by the strong collaboration and partnership that we have. We have not, we have, we have had cuts previously and where that could have caused us to kind of fall apart. We have, I believe, become stronger because we know that we need to be working together to serve our families even when those budgets are tight. So with that, unless you have some questions for me?
Questions?
You touched a little bit on funding, you know, but where do you get all your funding, where do all these collaboratives get their funding from? You know, I mean you said United Way and now you said your funding's been cut by so much. Who cut the funds or what funds were cut there?
The United Way funding is unique to the truance intervention program. So that would be the only program within the collaborative that gets some of that outside funding that's not from the county or from this LCTS. The collaborative funding is driven by, by the LCTS money. It's a random moment kind of process. It's a federally funded program and they have made some changes over the years and that's why that funding amount has been cut. So most of our funding, it's a federal dollar, but it flows to the state and then it flows to us.
Okay. It's all been cut significantly, hasn't it, over the last, what, five, six years?
Right.
Compared to where we once were with the collaborative.
Oh gosh, yeah, we, we used to get 900,000 a year.
Yeah.
Now we're not going to break the 200,000. So we have had to make a number of changes and restructure a number of different times because of that. And the governance board is very conscious of the, of the fact that we need to be looking at, you know, making sure that our programs can still provide a quality program and service to our families. That those cuts are not affecting that. And so I've been working with each of the programs and each of the work groups to see where we might assist them in other ways.
Gavin, if you have something.
Yeah, thank you. Carol, the, the federal funding flows to the state and then to you.
Yes.
Does, and you talk about this 17% cut, is this kind of, is this being experienced by the other collaboratives throughout the state too? Or has everybody taken a similar amount of reduction? Or does the state have the say in which collaboratives lose funding or?
No, they don't. We have a Title IV, it's a, we have a candidate list, I guess is what it's called. And those, the candidates on that list are identified as children at risk by a particular criteria, which is set by the state and the federal government. And then we also have individuals within our school probation, public health, and social services that are the ones that, that note the random moments. So they'll get, they'll get a notice in the email and they'll want to know what you were doing with a particular child at a particular time. And then you put in a code and then it's based on that code what that revenue is. So our, that's why our LCTS coordinator is working on this because Otter Tail actually saw an increase in.
That's what I was wondering.
Yeah, they actually saw an increase in their revenue. So that's why we've kind of gone back to the drawing board and looked at why, why are we not?
Or how you're reporting maybe?
It's, it's a training piece, part of it, she feels, making sure that they understand the codes and are utilizing the right codes. We aren't told which codes make, how much, you know, which ones would make us more money than others. It's kind of like a secret.
Sure. But I mean, I, I look back here at Rhonda and there's a lot of, a lot of programs that we have through, through our social services department too that, that are tied to funding and it's based on what work we do. But even Rhonda has said that there's times when that can be very confusing as to what to report. And if you, so if you might not report something right, does it mean that you're taking a loss just simply because of a training issue that where you maybe didn't report it? Or you could have reported it in a different way?
Absolutely, absolutely. So it's, it's a matter of retraining. It's a matter of making sure that we have all of the kids that we can on that candidacy list. And one of the things that we are in the process of doing is working with our agencies here in the, in the county that provide Rule 79 case management. Because it may possibly be that we could add some of those.
If they qualify.
Onto this candidate list. Because we really in this county use that as a means of preventing out of home placement. Our case managers really do some intensive work with those individuals. So we are working very hard to identify where there may be some things that we can shore up or change within that funding.
Well, I think you just said something really key and really important, not only to Clay County, but I think every county but, but the out of home placements is just, you know, if, if things can be done to prevent that.
Absolutely.
That, that's, that's money very well spent in comparison to the alternative.
Right, right. And that is one of the goals within using those LCTS dollars is to prevent out of home placement. And so, you know, we have, we have some really good programs that we are funding that address that. And so we want to be able to keep doing that with those programs and, and doing our best for families.
Thank you. Read through your, your report, you know, I was just amazed at all the people you are helping out and stuff like that, it was a good report. The other thing I ran into trouble sometimes was when you use acronyms and stuff like that, you know, you got a DD case here and then they got a Masha II, Rule 79. I guess I was lost in some of that, you know?
Oh, okay.
So I was just thinking sometimes, you know, if, the first time in the paragraph once you use those.
Certainly, sure. We get so used to using them.
Right, I don't know what a TC, a TC's a present on the juvenile court day, you know.
They need to have an abbreviation class for all the difference when you become a commissioner.
So Frank, we're going to probably have to have a quarterly acronym test.
Yeah, I know.
I can provide that for you.
There should be a, first, the first page should be all the acronyms they're going to use.
Yes, it is. It is a.
No, it was a very good report and it was interesting.
Yes.
You did a great job.
You took a lot of time to write this, that was very nice.
Thanks Carol.
Thanks, I will note that for the next one. We speak the lingo so much, we think everybody should know it.
Well, we tried.
Rural enrichment and counseling.
Yes. Well, Reach is located in Holly, Minnesota and we serve rural Clay, Norman, and West Becker counties. So we serve all Clay except for Moorhead and Dilworth just because there's available services that people can more easily access that live in those cities. And we either provide services directly, we help people get their basic needs met, food, clothing, make sure they're living in safe households. And then we connect them to other pieces. Because there's lots of other agencies in Moorhead area that are doing really wonderful work. And instead of us trying to duplicate that, we try to work with those agencies to bring services to the rural parts of the county. The first document that I provided was our annual report and it gives a short summary of services about all of the services that we do offer in the rural parts of the county. And then the second page was our program stats. We work with about 30 different agencies to provide the services that we do. And just to highlight, in Clay County, last year we, through our food pantry, back pet program and counseling, we helped 686 individuals in the rural parts of the county. Our food pantry is open to the residents of our whole service area. We distributed 912 food baskets last year. And I wanted to highlight how, how much our program is growing. This January and February, we served, or 60 households came to our food pantry this January and 54 came this February compared to last year when it was 47 in January and 37 in February. So that's an increase of 30 people just over the first two months of this year. We're seeing a lot of unique individuals, meaning people that have never visited food pantries before, people that are new to the area. We're seeing a lot of, a lot of new visits in that area. Our back pet program provides food to children that, they get a big of food that provides supplemental nutrition over the weekend when school provided meals are not available. In Clay County, we work with Holly and Yonhittardale School Districts and Glendon Felton Elementary School. And we also work with Norman County East Elementary right now. Right now, as of yesterday, we had 169 kids that are in the program and we've helped 196 children total this school year. Our family support program is one, is one of the positions that the collaborative helps fund. And that program helps families that are functioning under severe stress. They receive emotional support, referrals, assistance getting their basic needs met, and education to become healthy families. We just started a comprehensive financial literacy education program. We really want to help families become healthy and, and make, and help them so that they don't have to rely on emergency assistance like the food pantry and things like that. That's what our, our goal is. We work with agencies like the Salvation Army, they provide us funds that we can give out to residents in rural Clay County for utility assistance and rent assistance. We have a volunteer driving program for older adults that provides transportation to medical appointments in the Fargo, Moorhead, and Detroit Lakes areas. Our counseling services, we collaborate with Rape and Abuse Crisis Center, Summit Guidance Center, and Valley Christian Counseling Services. They come on a couple times a week, some of them, to provide mental health services in the rural parts of the county. Just really trying to make it as easy as possible for people that have transportation and financial barriers to access services. Another one of our programs is our Dress for Success Red River Valley Program. That service is, we have a boutique in Fargo and in Holly. And that program assists women who are seeking employment or have struggling with finding a job that can, with wages that can support her family. So we provide support, clothing, and confidence, we have career workshops. We try to supplement the programs that we do have with ways that we can have a deeper impact on families. As part of the collaborative, we, Reach attends the Children's Mental Health Work Group, the Family Support Model Work Group, the Substance Abuse Work Group. And then I assist with the administrative level as well. So that was a quick overview of what we do.
Any questions?
Yeah. I guess when I look at this food pantry, you said you had increased usage and stuff like that. When I see increased usage, that, that almost tells me we must be failing somewhere else if there's more people. If we have more people in county that need this type of service, we must be failing in another department, you know? Why have we got so many people that need food pantry services? I mean, that's good that we can serve them, I mean, that's, that's the good part. But why have we got so many more people that, is there another program that's failing that we're not getting these people to work or whatever? Is there just a lot of people moving into Clay County or?
I think especially the, you know, Holly, the population is growing. It's difficult for our clients that are in, right in the community of Holly have a hard time finding jobs. You know, there are some jobs available, but because of the small town, a lot of the employers in Holly have restrictions on hiring more than one member of the family. So that runs into a couple roadblocks.
And also if you're struggling financially, if you need to commute to Fargo and Moorhead, even a small commute drastically cuts into your food budget. So I think that's, the cost of living is increasing and, and I think that's the stress that you're feeling and we're seeing in other programs as well.
It's that dark transportation piece again, guys.
It looks like you utilize volunteers a lot, which is a good thing, so it's impressive.
Yes, yeah, we have a small staff of six and that includes our, our thrift store that we have in Holly that includes a manager there and our Dress for Success program. So volunteers we very heavily rely on and thankfully we have a wonderful group that helps us out.
I do want to say between your, your two presentations, just a rough estimate between cash and in-kind donations, you are bringing in $170,000 worth of donation and that's fabulous if you're working with a budget just over $200,000. Clearly our community really is, has deep pockets and a passion for what you're doing, so just thank you.
Absolutely, we, we really are blessed to work with great providers and individuals in, in all of our communities who really want the best for children and families, so.
Ms. Chair, as Director of our Clay County Collaborative, I'd like to say that Carolyn does an excellent job and just works day and night. And you are very, very valuable to the entire situation, thank you.
It's a passion for me. I, my, my daughter was served through a lot of these programs and it was beneficial for our family. And I, and I just really respect the work that these individuals are doing and want to see it continue.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you ladies.
Thank you.
Good report. Dave, come on up. Authorization to approve 2015 dust control quote.
Certainly.
Morning Dave.
Morning Dave.
We definitely want to get our dust under control, so.
Yeah, absolutely, if we don't get it out early enough, it makes the phone ring a whole bunch. Well, as in the past, we advertised for dust control services from vendors that do this work. And the past couple years, we've been only getting one, one vendor, one bidder and it's been Tri-City Paving out of Will Falls. They've done a real good job for us. It is nice to see another vendor jump into the pool here. Glacier Enterprises out of Fargo, they have bid, but like I said, the last two years they didn't bid. They, they don't buy enough chemicals, so they're not as competitive, so they didn't, they haven't been bidding. But Mindac Magic is a local company here out of Moorhead, just started up. They do a lot of salting of parking lots and things, so that's kind of their niche into getting this salt material. As you can see, the price per gallon on both bids was exact same. So we kind of went round and round with this. So we kind of went round and round with this and made a few phone calls, tried to see, you know, what other counties maybe have done. We checked with Mindac a little bit, and I guess I would like to recommend that we go with Mindac Magic out of Moorhead. The reason being is I think, and this happens a lot, down the road, if we need more of this material, you know, like we have construction projects this summer, if the people start driving around where we don't think they're gonna drive, then we need to add dust control on their, on these roads. Or if it doesn't work out, well, then when we do that, coming from Little Falls, we do have to pay a little higher rate. Their, their rate is for a one-time deal. They come and they spray, you know, all the people that, that advertise, you know, that call in on this. So once they do their work, additional mobilizations cost the county money, so I think this will save money in the long run by going local.
Kevin. Mr. Chairman, I think another very important component of this, when they're both identical, and one's from our county and one's not, I think we should be giving the business to our county.
Mr. Chair, absolutely. Wayne?
I'm done.
Cost, S Y, I don't know what that means.
Oh, a square yard.
Thank you.
Yep.
And is this contract for any purchases that we do for them, or only the initial, from them, or only the initial?
I think the, the, from Mindac Magic, we'll have a lot easier price, carrying that year, you know, throughout the whole year. The one from Little Falls, typically, the way the contract does read, I know you don't have the contract in front of you, but it is for kind of a one-time mobilization. The way, the way it works is, now that we've got this price, and once we get an approval today, then we, we send this out to all the people in Clay County, and then they contact the vendor and say, yep, I need so many feet, and then they need to go out and mark their own, they want it sprayed. So then, and then they also gotta pay them, you know, so they pay ahead of time before it happens. And then once that list gets put together, they, the vendor sends it back to us, and we actually draw it on a map, and then that way, the driver has it. Our guys have it, the blade guys have it, so they don't go blading through it. And then they come up, and it takes them like literally one or two days, and they get it all done.
So Dave, do you, do you send that to those who have previously done it, or?
Correct, yep, as well as we run it in the paper, too.
Okay, that's what I was gonna say, it would be good, so, because somebody who may not have wanted to do it before may want to do it now.
Yeah.
And there's, they have to have some way of knowing we're doing this, so we do put it in the paper.
True, and I think it was at the township meeting, I think they kind of brought up that maybe we could run it through the township officers as well. So we are gonna email a, a little letter to the township officers, the clerks that we have their lists for, so.
And just for my reference, how do we, as a county, do, like in rural Ogwood, it's a problem area because of all the gravel trucks? Is it just their, their responsibility to spray it, we as a county aren't putting this down?
We're, we're a customer, too.
Okay.
Yeah, we, I think we put down twelve thousand gallons last year. Years and years ago, there were some gravel pits that were, I don't know exactly why, but the county pays dust control on some of those, some of them we split. And then now, I, I think all the new CUPs that go through planning and zoning, it's a requirement.
Well, it's a requirement on them, but I've just heard that sometimes that doesn't necessarily happen, so.
Yeah, you're right, sometimes, I know ag industries, they sometimes do their own, they also are customers on some of these, so it's, it's a little bit all over the board. I think the biggest thing with planning, as long as they do it, I mean, you, you can try to do it with a water truck without any chemical, but, I mean, it's only good for maybe a half an hour, an hour, but, you know, we're a pretty big customer of this, too.
And I am in agreement, agreement with Kevin, I think it's, it's vital to support Clay County businesses, so I, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the, the bid from Mindac Magic.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Very none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same side, motion carries, thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
Kathy?
You're moving better?
Yeah, it feels a lot better, yeah.
You get four of us this morning.
Wow. So we have a request to hire men choice assessors. Morning, ladies.
We're outnumbering them at the table today, so thank you for.
All right, so we're here to talk about men choices, not to be confused with mature. So we constantly kind of have that conversation. So men choices, I'll just give a little intro. We were here probably in two thousand and thirteen, I think it was, to talk with you about the implementation of men choices, which is initiative in our state that all counties were needing to implement. So over the last year and a half, two years, counties have been implementing in phases, men choices, Clay County as well. At that time, you approved us, we had provided information that in order to implement men choices, we needed some additional staff. We, a little over three staff is what we talked with you about. At that point, you had approved two staff for us to hire. Since that time, Social Services has hired one, and Public Health has hired one. So this is initiative that involves both of our departments. So we're here to talk with you about where we're at now, and the request for some additional staff to fulfill our staffing pattern that we feel we need for men choices. So Holly Warner is our supervisor at Social Services in our disability service area, which is most impacted by men choices. And then Kathy Anderson, I'm gonna talk a little bit about, giving you an update about what is men choices and where we're at.
Okay, well, men choices combines multiple tools into one comprehensive assessment, and those tools include the developmental disability screening, long-term care consultation, personal care assistance, and will eventually include the private duty nursing assessment. The primary goal of men choices is to create a tool that provides consistent assessment results across the state of Minnesota, and it provides a person-centered approach to tailor services to the individual's strengths, goals, preferences, and assess needs. Only certified assessors can complete men choices assessments, and the county vocation is responsible for completing those screenings. So there's certainly times when we have individuals who are living in Clay County, but aren't, Clay County isn't the financial responsibility of that individual, but we are the one that needs to complete that initial assessment for them, and eventually will have to for reassessments. As a county, we are expected to perform administrative functions and activities, provide access to the assessment process, assure an adequate number of certified assessors. We've developed a certified assessor multidisciplinary team that meets weekly. We provide resources for technology, and we conduct quality assurance and monitoring activities in regards to men choices.
So in the next slide, you can see what we're currently doing with assessment activity. We have provided you with the actual and projected numbers of assessments, as Rhonda reviewed with you. We had been here in two thousand and thirteen and had asked for additional staff at that time. We had anticipated these assessments would take about, the certified assessor about six hours to complete. We found that it takes about ten, it's, it's very extremely labor-intensive. You know, those things can be complicated by utilizing things like language liner interpreters, as well as doing couples, and even just the stamina of the individual involved. And then there's additional work that has to take place once that certified assessor gets back to the office. Our reimbursement has changed with men choices. We currently now, DHS has us doing collaborative time studies, both in Social Services and in Public Health. They had told us to expect some increase in revenue with this new reimbursement process, and we, we have found that to be true.
So maybe just to, and Holly and Kathy, you can help me with this, but just to put a little more context around this screening. So if somebody were to call our office, maybe they have a loved one that's needing a nursing home level of care, or somebody that's in the community that needs some level of services and supports in order to remain in their home versus going into a nursing home. That's what this men choices assessment does. So we have the certified assessors that would go out and conduct this screening with the individual and family members to determine the level of need, whether a nursing home is needed, whether some other assisted living service is needed, or whether there's home care services that can be provided to help the individual remain in their home. So that's what the men choices assessment involves, if that makes sense.
Is that something, we've always done this, haven't we?
We've always done them, but they used to be called different things. They used to be called LTCCs, so long-term care consultations. We used to do a different screening for individuals that have developmental disabilities, different screenings for people needing personal care, attendance services. So it's all combining all of those screenings into one, which is now the men choices.
So what, what are all those people that were doing those things doing now?
They're still doing the screenings, but because of the intensity of the men choices screening, now taking more, like Kathy said, eight to ten hours.
Just longer.
It's, yes, it's a much more comprehensive screening tool than previously.
Mr. Chair? Is this mandated by the state of Minnesota?
It is, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So just to talk a little bit about the revenue, oh, I'm sorry.
Jenny, anything?
I have a, sorry, I, these are two thousand and eleven projected hours, correct? Do you have the projected, or are they for two thousand and fifteen, or is it further down in here?
Actually, when we came in two thousand and thirteen, the two thousand and eleven data is what the state gave us in order to project our activity. And so what we are finding, like Kathy said, our numbers are there, but the timeframe is actually looking more like, we had, they had said six hours, but we're looking at eight to ten hours.
Okay.
So for Clay County, the reimbursement, Commissioner Campbell, you talked about, we've always done this, and, and we have, and, and our funding was different as well. So with the implementation of this, our funding changed. So it's a little bit like Carolyn spoke about this morning with the random moments, the time studies. That's what this is now for, and it's, it's Social Service Time Study, SSTS for Social Services. And for Kathy's, it's the LCTS, which is what Carolyn talked about. So for us, what we did is we looked at, what was our revenue for this activity prior to men choices, and what is it now? At the time, the state told us that, don't worry, counties, we know you might have to add staff, but the revenue will increase to cover it. We were, when we came and spoke with you in two thousand and thirteen, we weren't sure about that. We were concerned, because it, it's kind of this secret formula, it's hard to know whether you're capturing it or not. But what, what we looked at was our actual revenue. So for two thousand and twelve, for Social Services, our screening revenue was the two hundred and thirty-one thousand, four eighty-five. In two thousand and thirteen, we only had one quarter of this new formula, so that was quarter four of two thousand and thirteen. So our revenue stayed fairly stable at two thirty-one, six forty-one. And now, in two thousand and fourteen, where we've had a full year of the new funding formula, our revenue had, is four hundred and seven thousand, one twenty-two. So it certainly increased as what our state said that it would for us. Some of this revenue balances out some other revenue issues, but overall, the, the revenue that we were able to bring in did cover the cost of the one FTE that you had previously approved, and we would plan for that revenue to cover this additional request that we're asking today. So.
And then I'll talk about the revenue in Public Health, the same kind of pre-men choices and then the men choices revenue. So you can see the increase, all of our adult health nurses are participating in that time study, and that's a very, that was very difficult to even predict, because we had no idea how that was gonna play in regards to moving to the time study revenue versus the billing. That was, that was very predictable, and we could really get a grasp of the revenue that we would receive. This was such an unknown, in fact, our first quarter, that October through December, we had lower, our first payment was lower than even when we billed. So we panicked a bit, because the state had said, you're gonna see some increase, and we saw a significant decrease. And what happened was, they, they had a formula glitch, and, you know, they had to reprocess the payments. It happened statewide, it wasn't just for Clay County. So they reprocessed that first quarter payment for us, and then, so that was the unpredictability. When we saw such a low amount, we, we were really concerned that this wasn't going to cover the expenses of this program. But, you know, they heard loud and clear, had to redo the, the formula in some regard, the secret formula. And so we did see an increase, and then the next payments throughout two thousand and fourteen, you can see the increase that Public Health received, about three hundred and thirty thousand more than when we were doing the pre-men choices billing. So, and I think our county administrator talked about when he was covering the two thousand and fourteen recap, the additional revenue that we had in Public Health, and part of that is this revenue.
Okay, Kevin?
Yeah, I mean, the question can go to both budgets, because both of you have separate budgets on this. For the two thousand and fifteen budget, did you incorporate an anticipated increased revenues? For, for this reason?
We did, for two thousand and fifteen, we did increase our revenue based on some of this, but not to the total level. So actually, we'll have, you know, if the revenue fund, revenue stream continues, I maybe did bring it up to the four hundred thousand. I think I did add into the two thousand and fifteen and anticipated four hundred thousand for LT, for this revenue.
Okay, so, so that would be the, that would be the total new revenue that you're talking about now?
Yes. You know, I have, I'd have to look, but I'm pretty sure.
Okay, but, because where I'm going with that is, is that we established your budget with that revenue, but did we include this one additional new person on the expense side in that same budget that you're asking for? Because if not, we've got a problem with our budget, because we've already incorporated the revenue when we passed your budget, but we wouldn't have incorporated the expense.
Right, right, yeah, that's correct, we did not include this position in the expenditure side. However, I'd, I'd have to look at the revenue, because I may not have, at the point of setting the budget, we may not have captured all of this revenue in there, so I'll have to check for one. But the second piece is, is in communication with DHS, what they indicate is, as we move with full implementation of men choices, counties should continue to see some enhanced revenue, so.
My, my point being here is that although you're saying that this is cost-neutral to the county, it's not cost-neutral based on the way we had approved the budget.
Yeah.
Do you follow what I'm saying there?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
So we could end up then having to find out, where are we gonna get this money on the expense side to cover it? Because we, we knew about the revenue, and we included it in our budget, but to, to what extent that revenue was? And the same goes to your, to your, to your side, Kathy, the same question applies to your side.
And I'd have to look back, I think we did have a point A position in there, and I don't think we included the total amount of revenue. We, we increased our revenue, but not, maybe not to the extent, because we didn't know at that point when we were doing our budget. So I'll, I'll review that and take.
I, and I know this goes to Commissioner Ingersoll's question, that this stuff is mandated, we gotta do it. But at the same point in time, we also have a, a budget to make sure that we don't end up falling apart on us, you know. So, so we, we're gonna have to figure out what, what else can we do? You know, there's a lot of things that are going on besides your departments, too. Jenny and I just sat in a meeting yesterday of some things that are developing that might require some additional staffing on something that we had no idea about not too long ago, you know. So, so, so this goes across the board in the entire county, so we have to be cautious, I guess. But certainly, we want to try to help people, but can, can you get those?
Yeah, in fact, if you've got the budget, yeah.
Yeah, we have a point A, yeah, so we have a, we have a position budgeted.
By the way.
Do you, as a board, think that's any reason not to pass this today, though? I don't think it is.
Well, we've got to come up with the money.
Well, we have plenty of money in reserve to cover it until the money comes in, I'm sure, that's, I don't think that's a huge issue.
Well, we've already accounted for the money coming in.
Well, what are the board's wishes, we do, I mean, it's, the state, as usual, isn't giving us any choice in the matter, so that's, that's the one thing that's never new when we discuss these things, so.
Kevin, just to clarify for me, the revenue to cover the position is there, it's just a matter of how we put it in the books?
Yes, what, what happened was, and, and again, Rhonda's not positive to what she put in there, but when we established the two thousand and fifteen budget, she anticipated the increased revenue from this in the revenue side of the budget. And, but what she didn't do is she didn't, I'm taking her words now, but she did not include the expense of the new position. So when all is said and done, when we have our revenues and then our expenditures, we come up come up with what we have to levy our, our citizens for. And so we would have fallen short of levying our citizens for that expense of that new position. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
So, so in other words, we're, we're falling, we're not going to collect enough money versus what we're going to spend.
But public health did include that position in there, so how?
I believe we have a point eight, and ours is revenue, we always collect enough revenue to cover every expense in our adult health program.
So, maybe I'm confused as to how many positions we're approving? We're just changing?
One, one for public health, one for social services.
But you're, but you're saying you think you've included your position in the expense
I believe I have a point eight in that, I'm pretty positive.
So how could we approve the public health one? Wait on the documentation, clearly we have to do it at some point for you, it's mandated.
Do you have the budget, Rhonda, 2015?
Well, the, the whole budget?
Well, I, I, I think we have to do it anyway, so we can approve the positions, and then maybe you can come back and let us know where we sit in terms of, you know, the budget and the expense, on the expense side, and then we'll have to deal with the issue of how we're going to pay for it, or maybe you, in the meantime, can come up with some solution in your budget if that's the case to help pay for it.
I, I, I agree that we have to do this, but, but I also want to, because mandates drive me crazy, and I don't like them, and so I'm going to talk about them for a second. And the fact of the matter is, is that we say this is, this is a mandated service. The mandated service, does it mandate how many people we hire? It doesn't, does it? So, you know, so we got to make sure that we understand that they, they, they can mandate that we do some things, but they can't mandate how many people that we have to have to do them.
But with that, though, if we understaff and stress our employer, employees out, then we're on ourselves, and our employees.
Sometimes, sometimes it might take longer to get things done.
But on the backs of our employees.
Well, they're only going to work so long, but what ends up happening is some of the people who need the services end up waiting.
Right.
That's, I, I'm just painting the picture here.
There is a response timeframe for when we do have a phone call and someone needs a screening, is it 20?
Twenty days.
Twenty days.
Calendar dates that we have to complete an assessment by.
So, along with the mandates, they put those things in there as well, which, yeah.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to higher the positions that are in front of us today.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All at the same time?
Aye. And I, I, I want the record to show, I, I support this, I just, I like to have all the financial data, and I don't think I have that to make that work, so. But I do support what needs to be done.
Okay. Motion carries, and then you'll come back to us with the.
We haven't voted, I'm sorry.
Yes, we did, yeah.
Pardon me, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Thank you, ladies.
We're going to stay, we're going to, we're going to continue to stay. Sorry about that, I know you wanted to get rid of us.
So now I request to fill a public health nurse position. More money, more people.
I'm not requesting money.
Governor, two day.
This is a different program.
And, and notice I have a little sticker on my badge.
Maybe I can have Darren come on.
He doesn't want to come up.
I'll be nice, I'll be nice, I promise, they're always nice.
Well, to explain this, as you see, it's a nurse that has given her retirement resignation, and she is currently a point eight, so a 32-hour-a-week position. So we are requesting to fill that position. And the reason why I have a point eight to one FTE is because we may very well have one or two nurses in this particular area, it's our family health area, that would like to reduce from one FTE to point eight, so we could swap that out. But we'd want to be sure internally, we know who wants what hours before we would advertise. So if somebody in this family health area is one FTE, and they'd like to request to reduce to point eight, then we could advertise for this position to be one FTE. If not, we'd advertise for point eight.
So you want that option?
Want that option, just so I can advertise, I would like to advertise internally, because otherwise.
And the impact of the budget is?
Impact would be, would be neutral, and again, you see the, the funding sources for this, there's also county dollars that are.
Okay. Jenny?
Putting in family health.
Just a, a question, I serve in the Lakeland Board, and one issue that they are constantly fighting is people not showing up for appointments. And so how do we fill our staffing needs for all our appointments when we have a large majority of the, the cancellations or no-shows? So what I'm getting at is, what is your downtime with employees? It's great that we have all these employees, are we, but are they being productive during their time, or are we having cancellations?
You know, our nurses are responsible for a tremendous amount of documentation with their family home visiting programs. They also have a variety of other, other responsibilities within the health department. They cover our public health clinic for immunizations. We have a number of them trained to do car seat instruction and installation. We have nurses that are doing consultant work for childcare centers. We follow up with the state regarding refugee health, late tuberculosis follow-up. We also are involved in some programs through the Minnesota Department of Health that do follow-up for elevated blood lead levels in children, children that don't pass their hearing tests in the newborn nursery before discharge, children that have documented birth defects, there's follow-up on the county level with those, and I'm probably even forgetting some of the other things that they do. So they have a variety of other activities that are keeping them busy.
That's broad enough that, that they're, we're not having down times.
And, and the, the no-shows are, or, you know, not being home when the nurses go out, we've been, it's been helped to have nurses with cell phones.
Oh, yes.
Because the, the younger population won't call, but they will text.
And respond.
And then they will respond by a text. So that really has been beneficial, so it's really reduced the number of no-shows or client not home.
Kevin? So Kathy, what you're saying is that you have this new position, and you, like a point eight to one point zero, but between, and so if somebody else took this one at
Point eight.
Point eight, then you would fill the other one at one point zero.
Correct.
But between the two would be a total of one point eight?
Correct. Yes, we're not adding any additional hours.
I move approval. And I'll take my little.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All at the same time, motion carries.
And I do want to comment, I think I've told both of you this many times, that your, that health department has always done a really good job. As a matter of fact, I think we've even gotten some money from your health department to go into other areas in the past that we've needed some assistance on, and I want to thank you for the work you've done on that.
Thank you. We, we try to be pretty fiscally responsible.
She's very strict.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you. Department update, human resources. Good morning.
Good morning, thank you for having me. Looking a little long, do you remember my password? We have to do these complex passwords now.
So while we're waiting, I got this deal right, where I'm supposed to put a code thing in for that deal on the ninth, do I, do you want me to do that?
You can do it whenever you want, up until, they, they want all the results in by April first, so.
But is that more for your, for county staff, or?
No, it's actually for the class that, that's going to be given by Tony Smith.
Okay.
And she uses those results and then goes through those results for you.
Could I just sit on the, the class without paying for the class? I mean, I, I mean, I.
I'll pay for you if you want me to.
No, no, but, but, but I mean, I, I don't know.
No, it's, what it is, is it's, it's called a DISC assessment, and it kind of tells you how you, how you react to other people, your, your management style, that type of thing.
Let's, let's pay for that, so we completely understand how it would be.
It would probably be worth the 50 dollars.
I've been trying for 61 years to figure it out.
You're probably going to charge double for him, so.
Okay, all right, fine, I'll, I'll put in the code.
That's kind of what the, that's kind of what it's about, is the whole show. I haven't done it yet, but the links were sent out, so.
Can we do it already? I, I mean, I got it too, but I don't.
Yeah, I've, I've done mine, you just click on that site, and the code is in, in the, in your entry, if you click on that site.
My secretary take care of that.
Well, if I could handle it, anybody can.
So that means it's all, it's there, this is the public meeting, right?
Yes, it is.
Well, since this is my first departmental update, I've narrowed it down to the 63 essential slides, if that's okay? And I only have one acronym in there, so you should be, you should be.
Thank you.
My intent here is to kind of give you an overview of who is Clay County, and, you know, kind of some statistics. First part of this presentation would be, you know, who we are, and the, you know, our longevity, our hires, our, our departures, and that type of thing. And then the last couple of slides go into just kind of what HR does on a daily basis, basically. So, should we go ahead and get started? Okay.
Go for it.
We currently have 498 employees as of last week, and most of those, of course, are full-time. But we have increased our variable hour employees in the last probably year. We usually run it about, usually ran about 90, 92 variable hour employees, that's up to about 104 now. So that kind of breaks down on what kind of employees we're hiring, as far as their status goes. Keep that with my slides here. Single versus married. 58% of our employees are married. 66, or two-thirds of our employees live in Minnesota. Thought this was kind of interesting, 59%, almost 60% of our employees are female, so. I heard they're taking over the world anyways, so that's why I don't know what's on. All right, our longevity, this is another kind of interesting statistic that I thought, that 234 of our employees, or 47% of our employees, have been here less than five years. The other interesting fact is that 26 of our, 26% of our employees are eligible now, or will be eligible for retirement within this next, next six to 10 years.
What percent?
26%. And that's on the next slide here, I'll show you that in a second.
Darren, maybe you don't have the information in front of you, of that 47% of our employees that have been here zero to five years, you don't have an age bracket for that crew?
Um, I don't have it with me, but I can certainly give that.
It would be interesting to see, I think I know what it is, but just.
But as you can see, we, we have some very long-term employees here, you know, that have been here over 20 years.
Page four.
So, they're, they're, you know, probably with the, the baby boomers retiring here in the next six to 10 years, we'll probably have some, somewhat of a gap with, with only having 47% of our employees here is zero to five years, so there will be some learning curve here probably in the next few years. One of the things that is nice about it is some of the departments have brought back long-term employees to help train newer employees, I know social services has done that, I know public health has done that, brings them back as a variable hour employee to kind of help out with some of the turnover that we've had, and the new employees and their training. So that's one way of kind of helping out the new employees coming in. The age of our workforce? Like I said, 26% of our workforce is either eligible now, or will be eligible for retirement within six, within six to 10 years. And that's assuming our retirement age is 62 or 66. That does not break out the law enforcement, you have the opportunity to retire a little bit earlier. This is the number of hires that we had last year. As you can see, a lot of those are variable hour hires, the department heads don't have to come to the board for those, so you may think that 127 is a lot of hires, but a majority or half, almost half of those are variable hours. And those variable hours have a, a pretty high turnover rate, you know, they're students or whatever, they come in for a couple of years, or during the summer or something, and then they leave to go on to bigger and better things. As a matter of fact, about 33 of the people came and went last year, in 2014, so.
I mean, I'm even looking at the full-time, you're looking at 43, that's 10% of our people.
Yep.
I mean, even taking out the rest of them, 10% of our people are leaving.
Yeah.
If that trend continues, we're going to have a big turnover.
Yeah, 10%, you know, I, I think it's always wise to have some turnover, because you're getting new people in. 10% is, and, and the other thing that I've seen is, our hiring has picked up a little bit, with the economy getting a little better, people are starting to move around a little bit more. You know, during the recession, we, we didn't have a lot of hires, and now that the recession is on, and people are hiring again, the workforce is starting to move a little bit more.
Okay, that's 43, is there, oh, excuse me.
No, that's okay.
That's fine, continue. Go for it.
Do you know how many were retirements, and how many were resignations, or?
Um, I have that in the system, I don't, I don't know.
Because I'm looking at your eyes, as we hire, as a full-time, I mean, as a retirement, you hire a new one at the lower scale, you know?
Yep.
We should almost be saving money in some, in some situations, you know, but.
And, and when the directors come to the board, we usually do a wage calculator and show that those people that are retiring are, they're usually at step 12, and, you know, we're hiring somebody at step one, so there is a cost savings there, for the most part.
Kenny?
Frank asked my question about the retirement, it would be interesting to see of the 32 full-time that we, the departures, what was due to retirement, but also, if an employee transfers in-house to another position, is that included in this?
Yes, those numbers are included.
In the departures as well?
If, yes, they go from, is it included in the departures or not? I think it is. Because if they go from like, let's say they go from a variable hour to a full-time employee, or they switch departments or something like that, that would be a new hire for that department.
Okay.
Wayne? No, thank you, Mr. Chair. When you, when, in follow-up to what Frank had to say, when you have 10% turnover, you have people retire, you have people relocate, move on to other things, in your opinion, is 10% with the inclusion of retirements and relocations, possibly deaths, things like that, is that out of line, or is that pretty standard?
Um, I don't think it's.
From your experience?
I don't think it's way out of line, but it's hard to tell, because where I came from before this job, we had 50% turnover. So 10%, you know, I don't think between, if you, if it was between 5% and 10%, I don't think it was alarming at this point.
It sounds. I mean, you do have those situations where people leave, they're not angry with their jobs or anything.
They, they find bigger and better things, people that have gone to supervisory positions in other, other counties or whatever.
Kevin? There, we have, according to this, we have 53% of our, of our people, in terms of age, are, are 45 years or younger. And, you know, in today's marketplace, it's very unusual to see employees even staying around any one company more than two or three years. That is just the new wave of the young people. So, and, so, so that's something that. So, and, so, so that's something that every employer deals with, not only the county. And in addition to that, we do have, in some instances, entry-level positions. And those entry-level positions, people go there to get their experience with the idea in mind, they're gonna move on. And so every year, we're gonna see some of that happen.
Ten percent is not a lot.
No, no, I mean, it, it explains a lot in terms of, of why there has to be probably more money spent in training and stuff like that, but, but it's, it's almost unavoidable.
It's, it's in many ways the new norm, and so how do we, as a group, learn to accommodate better?
Not everybody stays around the place for forty years.
Go ahead there.
Yeah, but I'm counting the days.
Yeah, that is exactly right. The younger, the younger crowd is getting into their career and a lot of them are moving around, not, you know, not staying. My dad stayed at Westinghouse for forty years, and that was the norm back then. Now it's, you know, you stay two, three, four years, get some experience and then move on, so. Ten percent, I don't think is out of the. These were the departures that we had last year. Like I said, our variable hours are bigger turnover.
So when you say, when we look at the previous one where we have these stats where we have forty-three hires, but we had thirty-two, we didn't add eleven new full-time people.
No, and that's, when I, when I saw these numbers, I thought of you, Kevin. Because I knew you were gonna ask that question, and we were, we were kind of.
I am so predictable.
We were kinda perplexed ourselves on why it was ninety-four departures and a hundred and twenty-seven hires. What we found out was some of those departures were in 2013, the November-December timeframe in 2013, that we ended up hiring in the January-February timeframe. So really, we were counting some of 2013's departures in the 2014 hires. So, we were scratching our heads over that as well.
He's gotta keep him on his toes.
I know, exactly.
Well, I'm glad I fulfilled your expectations.
You did, I was expecting that question from you. Okay, some of the functions that Human Resources Department does is, of course, our benefits management, managed by my left-hand lady over here, who does a lot of the benefits stuff. Open enrollment, as everybody knows, in October is an extremely busy time for the benefits. And getting all the packets ready and handed out and getting everything updated and explained to the employees during the open enrollment timeframe so we can get everything entered, back and entered into the system by the new year. The Affordable Care Act, that's my acronym, ACA now. That has been a, kind of a headache, although I think we're very well positioned to have minimal impact on us just because of the way we've set up to do our benefits. But there's a lot of rules and regulations that Jennifer has had to learn, and she's the resident expert on the Affordable Care Act and its implementation. As a matter of fact, I think it's five years old as of today. So, that's always, was a big factor. We did, one of the things that we did have to set up is a tracking system for our variable hours to make sure that they don't go over the thirty hours per week in accordance with the Affordable Care Act so that they would then become benefit-eligible. So, we kinda had to work through that a little bit and figure out how we were gonna track that. New hire orientation, I think Commissioner Gross and Commissioner Mojo went through that as well. We usually run those the last Monday of every month. We've had twenty-four classes so far and have trained a hundred and fifteen people for the new hire orientation. Policies and procedures, just basically keeping up with the policy, personal policy being the main one, of course. But we also have the further policy and some of the other policies that we kinda keep track of and keep, keep on the internet. Union negotiations, as you know, we have nine unions in the county. Usually, every year, we have two or three that are going through contract negotiations with us. We do have one left this year, and that's the Assistant County Attorneys that we're gonna be meeting with on April first to, to go through and mediate their contract. Also, some of the grievances that come through, HR is usually the first point of contact for those. We also manage the compensation for the grids. We have several grids that we have to update every year depending on the cost of living allowances that the board states is gonna happen that year. Evaluations, we track all evaluations and keep all the evaluations for the county. Probably runs about four hundred per year. So, that's notifying the department head when their people have evaluations and then turning around and reminding them that they haven't turned them in on time, so that's kind of a process that we keep up. We also issue the county badges and manage access through our simplex system on who gets in what doors at what times. So when a new employee comes in and gets their badge, we kinda set them up for that. Our work comp and FMLA management, we worked at. FMLA, I think we had, I don't know, we had thirty-nine FMLA cases last year. So, that's always a, kind of a paperwork shuffle and getting all the doctor's notes and the fitness for duties and all of that good stuff. So, that keeps us pretty busy as well. This year, we started our applications, online application process. HR is involved with almost all the full-time interview processes. So whenever a department head has an interview, we have an HR rep in there with them. The only interviews that we really don't sit in on are the, for the variable hour interviews. But for all the full-time employees, we normally have an HR person in there. Reporting, we have a lot of reports that we have to do, a lot of them at the beginning of the year. For our payroll audit, risk assessment reports, ACA reporting, that kinda keeps us bit easy. Most of the time, within the first couple of months of the year. I've also been tasked to look at and review the PDQs and look into twenty-five percent of those each year. Also, the PDQ appeals process, so if the department head does not agree with what we come up with with our PDQ assessment, we certainly go through the appeals process and manage that system. Our safety committee, Jennifer is kinda heads that up. We've made a lot of changes in the safety committee in the last couple of years. We've gone from a fifteen-member panel to a seven-member core panel, and then we have a subcommittee as well. That seems, we changed that, what, about three years ago? That seems to be working a lot better. One of the big things that the safety committee did was the emergency response system and the emergency action plan that everybody should have. As a matter of fact, we're having a drill tomorrow in the family service center where we'll do an actual evacuation of the second and third floors. We've already done the fifth and fourth floors for evac so that everybody kinda knows if, if there's a lockdown, how you go about doing that. Training management, I'm also tasked with managing the training through supervisors' training. Some of the training that we've done so far is the Dave Cornell supervisor's training, some reasonable suspicion training that we have coming up, the DISC training and kinda coordinating all of that and getting that done and annotated. The other thing that we also did was, as part of the safety committee, is set up a training database so that we can track who's been trained in what kind of safety procedures. So if they have, you know, forklift training or, you know, something like that, Joe or Nathan or somebody gives us that list and we can track who's had that training and when they had it. Discipline and grievances, of course, is just kind of a thing that happens with the department heads. If they have a question on an employee, on what to do as far as counseling or coaching or whatever, written reprimands, that usually comes to HR to gather some information from us on what they should and shouldn't be doing. So. Last slide is some of the tech advances that we've taken place in the last year. This, 2014 was a big year for HR as far as going a lot of the upgrades to the technology piece. We did go to paperless personnel files several years ago, which has been a really nice thing of scanning things in instead of having huge file folders worth of personnel files. It's all electronic now, which helps a lot. We upgraded our HR payroll system, the Optimum system, from the AS400 base to a Windows SQL-based system. That we did at the end of the year, which probably wasn't the wisest thing because that's when we were doing all our end-of-year stuff, getting all the benefits stuff updated, getting all the grids and payrolls updated. But it's kinda up and running now, we've got a lot of it figured out and seems to be working fairly well. Like I said earlier, we upgraded our application processing system with Civic HR. That was part of our web, when we updated our website, that was part of the updated upgrade as well. And now people can go onto the website and apply online with their application instead of having, writing it out and sending it and having it scanned into the system. So, there has been a few bumps in the road with that. The more we learn about it, the better we get at it, but that was an upgrade middle of last year. We also upgraded our HR internal internet pages because HR does have a lot of information regarding HR on the internet. A lot of our benefit stuff, which is the next bullet there on our benefit information through HR connections, that's done through our Oaks. And they, it's basically a website that they can go to and anything and everything they wanna know about their benefits and what the county has to offer and their benefit plans and their calculators and everything are located now on that HR connection. It's a pretty tool for the employees of the county. So, those are the, the big things. All of those upgrades happened last year, so we had a very busy year as far as technology goes. Hopefully, that'll settle down this year and we can get on to some other bigger and better things. So, did you have anything to add, Jennifer?
No, just here for morals. Or questions?
Or questions?
Any questions for these fine people? No, I just wanna, you know, I'm thankful that we as Clay County have a human resource or, you know, HR people, you know, this. A lot of the companies are going, you make a telephone call, you know, if you wanna get information or something or wanna retire or whatever the case may be, you gotta call in. And then we still, as Clay County, we got people here and I'm thankful for that and thank you for the job you do.
Thank you.
Good report, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim?
I don't have any slides, I really apologize.
Morning. Well, let's see, I believe that there's a matter for discussion before my update. I believe you all got in your packets a draft land lease for the county-owned property up in Fulton. It was interesting, being this wasn't a bid process, we really didn't know what to charge them, so. We kicked it up a hundred dollars a year and figured that was, was good. We did extend the term of the lease out to five years just to make it easier for everybody, not have to think about it so often.
How much land are we talking about?
We're talking about two fractional sections. I believe they each entail about three-hundred-and-twenty acres. I do have. Pass it's not it, gives us some idea.
Did you get that rock question answered? Yeah, remember they dug up a bunch of rocks? Why don't we talk about the bigger ones, the rocks? Leave them? We were gonna make it, please see.
So, Kevin?
Anyway, we'll talk about it later.
That's been through committee and everything. Anyway.
That's been through committees?
No.
Not necessarily.
So the lime-colored area here are the two sections that the county owns. Like I said, they're fractional sections. They're not, they're full sections, but there were, the correction lines are made and the longitude lines, so they're not full six-hundred-and-forty-acre sections. Like I said, they. Well, the top one is about two-hundred-and-fifty acres, so we're looking maybe five-hundred total acres in the lease. And then that does not include the county gravel pit area. I mean, that's, that's the county utilizes that, it's included in the, in the lease, but the gravel pit operations carry on. So I guess, we've held this lease, DNR has shown an interest in it. The lease that, the draft lease that was sent out to you has been reviewed by DNR, the county auditor, county attorney's office. Like I said, really all it does is, it's pretty much the same lease we had with private individuals except the term is extended to five years and their payment is increased by a hundred dollars a year. So fifteen-hundred dollars for the term of the lease.
So we're talking three-hundred dollars a year?
Three-hundred dollars a year, yep.
For two-hundred-and-fifty acres?
Yep. And previously, you know, it's been a farm lease, and the best I can tell is the county has leased this land out just so we didn't have to take care of it. Because the lease has really put that onus on whoever has the lease, you know, to keep the weeds down and to do it.
And they're hayin' it, is that what?
It, it's been a farm hay lease, and some, some people have hayed it. In general, most, most of the leases, I think, have been for deer hunting in the fall.
Why don't we sell it?
We'll talk about that in a little bit.
Okay, very good, thank you.
At least parts of it. The DNR is interested in it because it's got such pristine prairie on it that they wanna be able to have some control over that. When they farm it or they hay it, they will not do it to feed animals. What they will do is, they will go in and they will hay it and collect seed stock for use here, use in any other place.
So, if we're gonna talk about selling some, do we wanna approve a lease for five years?
Well, the, the lease right now says that if there's any sale of property, that the lease goes void, so we'll renegotiate that
Oh, okay.
when the time comes.
Okay.
And DNR is aware of that.
So there's five-hundred acres total in this piece that were approximately, so it's about three dollars an acre?
Yep. The lease has never been based on valuation. If it was, nobody could lease this land.
Right.
Okay, one of the board's wishes on the lease.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Brian?
Mr. Chair, I was gonna talk with Tim about this this morning and we didn't connect up before the meeting. And I guess my only concern is, when we had our land meeting last year, when we had our meeting with DNR, the prior leasor, leasie did remove some rocks and, and did disturb the surface, and we had a long discussion about that with DNR and the rocks. Is that not a concern or have we, and in the lease, they were not supposed to disturb that and it created quite a mess?
Well, yeah, they went around and picked rocks, is what it amounted to.
Yeah, but they didn't put them anywhere though, didn't they dig them up?
They piled them up.
Yeah, they piled them up, okay.
So they could hay without going around it, or what was the purpose?
That's what the argument was, yeah. It's the first time ever it been done.
And it pitted it the surface, is that the problem?
They made a mess out of it.
There were some areas that were impacted, and DNR is, they're determining themselves whether they would like to see those rocks put back or whether that would actually cause some more damage or just leave them in the piles. So that's something that I think, you know, if they wanna work something out about the rocks, that we can say yay or nay about it.
Yeah, my concern though is with the former. My concern though is, is with the former leasing. I think if we sign another lease, are we just then moving down the road and, and not holding them accountable for what they did on it, is my only concern. That was our discussion last summer anyway, when we had that meeting with DNR. I mean, we talked about that rock business quite a bit.
Well, the lease is expired already. It expired at the end of the year. I guess that would be a question and I know Jenny's not here, but that'd be a question for her as to what our recourse would be on that. Again.
Or isn't there a concern? I, I, maybe, maybe this discussion is, if you don't have any concern on it.
I don't think there's a concern.
There was last summer, I know.
The concerns with the DNR, not with you?
Right.
No.
Who's, okay.
Well, DNR was the one who brought it to our attention. They, they were up there for some reason and said that the leaseholder had been out and with a front, no, not with a front end loader, but with a bobcat and had been picking up rocks and piling them up.
I guess I, I don't see what the problem is on that. I mean, if we're, if we're making it into better hay ground, it's not like he's digging ponds, right? He's just picking them.
And like I said, it's a matter that when we discussed it with DNR, even DNR didn't know whether it was in their best interest if they were to lease it to leave those rocks in piles or to actually place them back where they had come from.
Because it's not like he's bringing in uncertified seeds and weeds, I mean, it's...
But when you start disturbing it and start piling up rocks like that, you do provide sites for invasives to, to take a stand, so.
It, it was messy. You'd have to see the pictures. And, and it's not DNR's concern, we're the property owners. It's our responsibility to hold the former leasing responsible for what it, if it's not a problem, then, then it's not a concern. But it was last summer when we had this discussion.
So what was the problem for the DNR? Well, the problem for the DNR was that it had disturbed some prairie land and also, like I said, established rock piles that can be the sites of invasive. So this is all prairie land? Most, all of it, yeah. Because the, the area that they had worked was just north of the county pit, in fact, north of the county pit, just south of the road that goes there. No, they haved prairie land? Yep. You can hay it and, and feed it. DNR's, like I said, DNR's interest is, DNR's interest is to hay it and, and actually capture seed?
And it's actually good if they hay it because then it just spreads that native seed out when they swap it.
Wayne?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tim, this rock situation seems to be an issue today regarding the past. If we go ahead and lease, pass this today and lease it, would that leave the former leasing off the hook in case anything happened? Should we have an opinion on this? How urgent is it to act on this today?
Well, the DNR would like to see action on it, but I guess if that's a question, I can't answer it.
Okay. Brian, I'd be willing to withdraw my motion, but I'd like to hear what you have to say and Jenny has to say before I would ever do that.
Mr. Chair, if Tim is okay with it, I know the pictures, it was a mess last summer. If he's okay with it, if it's been addressed, I, I'm okay with it. I just bring it up because I think if we move down the road with another lease, yes, even though the lease is up with the other one, I think they're still held accountable for the damage that they did. If it's not damaged, then it's not a problem.
Thank you. Jenny?
There is written in here that the leasing shall not perform any ditching, decking or other work that alters the topography of the premise. But also farther down, the leasing will return possession of said premises to lesor at the expiration in as good of condition as at the commencement of said lease. Reasonable wear, tear and damage by natural forces expected. So clearly this is not natural forces and, you know, if you think that...
My question would be to the Department of Natural Resources whether they want to see this guy who did it to begin with, come back and try and fix it or whether that's something that they would much rather.
So that really, by me, that really does nothing to do with what we do today then?
No. You know, the legality of it, I cannot answer the question.
Kevin?
I would like to, I would like to go back to Frank's question, to be honest with you. This is, this is land that is very restricted in what its use can be.
Yes.
And why do we want to be landlords collecting fifteen hundred dollars a year or whatever it is, or, or not even that, but over, over a 10-year period collecting that kind of money and yet still have all potential liability issues? Why don't we sell it and just be done with it?
Okay. Yeah, we can have that discussion, I think.
I mean, there's a motion on the table, I guess.
Yeah, let's, let's vote on the motion we've got and then we'll move on to whether we should sell that property or not. So we've got a motion. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or same sign. Motion carries. Okay. Tim, let's sell this land, so.
Can I just touch on this? What I passed out to you, this, this drawing, there are two areas that are colored, one is red, one is blue. Those are the two parcels that DNR would very much be interested in selling and as part of our Felton Purist stewardship plan, the conclusion of the plan was there is no gravel resource there and the county should look at, you know, selling those properties or putting them in the hands of an agency that would, would care for them. In order to do that, they've, they've got money available to them. In order to do that, they need some commitment from the county that we're willing to sell it to them if that's the case. I don't know if you want to talk about that today. They need to have some, some direction from the county so they can, can mobilize their folks. They've got to get an appraiser who would go out and appraise it for them. And they're not going to do that if the county has no, no idea of selling it to them.
Well, maybe we should save this for a meeting and get a, some idea of what we're talking about in terms of the value of the land and...
And how do we know they'd be the only interested buyer?
Exactly, yeah.
That's just my question.
I mean, if we're going to sell it, we want to...
For the best interests of the county, you want to get the best deal for everybody.
Right.
I mean, we're looking at the DNR, excuse me. If the DNR were purchases, they wouldn't put it back on the tax rolls.
Right.
But if a private person buys it, it goes back on the tax roll.
Mr. Chairman, I, I like your idea. I think, you know, we had, and I don't know who was on, I think John was on, so maybe Jenny would...
I was on, I was on Felton.
That's on that land. I, I think we should send this to them and I, with the idea to come back and recommend to us should we, should we sell this property or not.
Yeah, we'll get some information on, you know, what our options are with this land and we can move on from there, so.
Sounds very good.
Is that agreeable to everybody?
It just seems to me that it's not, it's, right now it's not a taxable land and...
Mr. Chair? Kevin, if we did this, then we would have to have it appraised, right?
I don't, we, you'll have to go through to see what the process is.
Yeah.
I don't know that we have to have it appraised, but depending on who's buying it and how they're funding it, they might, their institution might require an appraisal.
Well, that's for the community to say. Thank you.
The top page of what, what just got handed out is just a recount or recap of our flood grants, the last two that we had. 2009 flood grant and 2011 grant, they were closed out last year. And just to give you an idea as to what we, the money that we took in, the money that we expended. The 2009 grant, there was a total project amount of 1.66 million dollars. We expended 1.36 million, had $300,000 on expended funds, bought seven properties. And the buffaloes in the red, so those seven properties now belong to us. We can't give them away. The 2011 grant, that was a, a much bigger grant. A total of eight and a half million, a million dollars was our share. And for those of you who may not have been here then, our share could be made up of cash in kind or the DNR allowed us to take the difference between the valuation of a property and whatever we paid for it and we could use that as match. So what we did was we estimated values of property. We paid 87 and a half percent, so on every property we acquired, our match from that property was 12 and a half percent of its value. And we were hoping to make a whole million dollars that way. We didn't quite get there. But like I said, we had eight and a half million dollars, we expended 8.3 million dollars, had $195,000 in unexpended funds. We didn't make our match completely. We were 50, $50,800 short. So that actually came out of the county general fund. But when you look at the entire project, that was less than 1% of the entire project costs that we actually cash matched. So for the project, I think that was a pretty reasonable deal for the county. We got 36 properties on the red and on the buffaloes and it cost us 0.68% in cash, so. So those are done. We're...
So those are all closed out?
Those are all closed out.
So we turn back the 195 and the 300,000?
Well, the 300,000, you know, they're all, they're grants that you have to get reimbursed for, so if we didn't apply for it, we didn't get it back. And the 50,800, when we made our last submission for reimbursement, DNR calculated what our match was when it was up to that point and they just didn't pay us.
So between the two years, we left a half a million dollars out there.
Yeah.
But at the same point in time, we, we had gone to every property owner who we felt might need the assistance of a buyout.
Yep.
We contacted every one of them and offered it to everybody that we could.
Yeah, and the 2011 grant, we actually had another property that we had considered for acquisition, but knowing the funds that we had left, there wasn't money there to fund it. It would have been about a $250,000.
And we had the 195.
We got $195,000.
So if I understand it right, we got 36 properties now located along the red and the buffalo that are our properties now.
We actually have 43 from these two grants.
Oh, 43, yeah, we had...
And that doesn't include the properties that we acquired back after the 97 flood. Right. So, can't remember.
So they, these are all off the tax rolls now, these properties that they get down?
They're all off the tax rolls, yes, sir.
Okay. Are we going to, what's the plan? Do they just stay up? Is there a plan for these properties or...
Well, the plan is, is that we view them at least once a year and we make sure that they're mowed, you know, maintained. We utilize the highway department to do mowing as necessary. They, when we went into the 2011 grant program, we thought that we had the ability to rent or lease the properties back to the next door neighbors or whoever and were informed that no, they have to remain under the ownership of a public entity and can't be leased to any one individual or group.
Was that for perpetuity? Was that, was that, was that the lan, language that was in the state grant?
It was in both.
Both?
Well, the, the federal grant, FEMA has never allowed that.
Yeah, well, but I don't see any federal in the 2011.
No, and that was a state grant and that was, we asked that question numerous times.
Right, I remember that.
We kept getting the same answer that no, you can't. So it's something to do with coming out of, that's what it was. The funds came out of the bonding and in order to keep the bonding clean and not taxable, we could not do that.
I wonder at some point in time though, is if there isn't, that goes to Jenny's question or into, to a T, I, I don't, I don't know that at some point in time, I would think we, we should be able to ask the state to re-lease that.
Well, if the, if the argument was that the bond issue was issued non-taxable and selling these properties and making a profit off of it jeopardizes that taxability, then when the bonds are paid off, one would think that it's not an issue anymore.
The stipulation.
So we'll have to look into that.
I think we have to be very careful what, what we would, you know, I think about the only thing you'd really want to allow would be either somebody to buy it for hunting or buying it for tillable.
Right, you don't clearly want to...
They couldn't sell it to build on, so.
Yeah. But still, still, still there's a lot of people who'd be willing to buy a property along the river for those types of things.
Oh, sure, absolutely.
I guess that's what I'm getting...
Right, yeah.
But that's a future discussion when...
That's a future discussion and it stands right now, the county ownership allows them, you know, hunting rights on it anyway, so.
But it'd be nice to, they paid tax.
That's, I understand that, yes.
Okay, Tim, moving on.
Moving on, the next two pages are just a synopsis of 2014 in the planning office and environmental services. The top two numbers in, in the planning office, new housing permits and other construction permits, you'll see that in 2014, we issued permits for 24 new homes. In 2013, we issued for 48 new homes. Other construction permits didn't vary too greatly. We tend to see if new home construction slows down, we'll see a little bit of an uptick in, in remodeling permits, so. Other things that we did, we did conditional use permits and interim use permits. Two plats last year, two rezonings last year. Board of Adjustment dealt with nine variances. That included variances from setbacks from roads. A lot of our shoreline property was platted back in the 50s and 60s and compared to today's requirements for lots, majorly substantial, they're not substantial or under, undersized for what they are. So there's a lot of variances that get requested in the shoreline areas. I guess if you've got any questions there. We do have, I guess what's not reflected there, we're still in discussion with a couple of parties relative to economic development, Bay Area Crop Sciences and then Monsanto out in, in Glynnan. We had pretty good discussions with them until about the middle of last year and then everything kind of shut down with Monsanto, although they are now back in the mix. They're, I believe they've let bids on their project and have solicited the city of Glynnan for annexation. So we may actually see from that project, initially they were interested in a tax abatement. Now that they're annexing into the city, they want to see an extension of sewer and water, which actually puts them under the eligibility for a TIF, which we've never dealt with before. So we, we may get to do some fun things this year that we all get to learn from, so.
Glynnan doesn't have that themselves?
I think they bought onto our EDA program, so. They've got, they've got somebody contracted that does some economic development form or at least work in that direction, so they would probably help.
I think the, the key there, for, for those that don't remember, we had a, we had a couple of businesses in the past that kind of put the cart before the horse and, you know, I think if we know that potential things are going on here and what they're looking for, it might be worthy just to remind them of, of the correct process that goes in place so that they don't jeopardize the ability to...
In particular with TIFs, because if you put shovel in the ground prior to applying for a TIF, you are no longer eligible, so.
And I think we had one of those that was the TIF.
Well, we had a, we had a tax abatement that...
Tax abatement, yeah.
Yeah, that was started before, so.
Right.
The second page is the other half of Planning and Environmental Programs. It's Bruce and Kent on, over in the Family Service Center. Their inspections, they always do a lot of septic inspections every year. Now that we're doing the city of Moorhead for food, beverage and lodging, they do a lot more there. And with the new legislation, a couple of years ago, they, they inspect swimming pools on an annual basis.
Every one of them?
Yeah, I believe they've got to check the drains in every one of them at least once a year. And Memorial Home Parks, they also do in the county, so. They did a total of just short of 600 inspections last year and different licensing that they've issued was just short of 300 different types of licenses, so. There's something that some of you may remember. A number of years back, we had the Minnesota Geological Survey approach us about doing a Clay County Geological Atlas. It doesn't sound like much, it's been done in other counties before. It didn't cost us anything and what it does is it kind of gives us, for our use and for the use of gravel contractors, other contractors, building contractors, a real good handle on what the geology of the county is relative to mining, construction and sort of... construction, that sort of thing. And last fall, I got a call from Chris over at the Morehead Water Treatment Plant, because they had been working with Morehead to do some, documenting some wells around the city and in the county. And he said, they're here. And I said, what's here? And he said, the geologic atlases are here. This is a package of them. I think they have five different maps in here, much of which I don't understand. But when he called, he said, yes, they're here. And I said, well, how many did they send? He said, I have a pallet load. So if you know anybody who might have any interest in the Clay County geologic atlas, send them my way. I will make sure they get one. If you're interested, I will make sure that each of you get one.
A little light reading?
Yeah.
Wayne?
Yeah.
I am interested, and secondly, maybe if somebody from your office might want to contact the schools in Clay County, I would think that they would be very interested in having two or three each available.
We need to get them out to the schools. There should be at least one in each library in the county.
Right.
Give each community one.
Get one over to Tim Peele over at the...
Oh, Yump Cops?
Yeah.
Yeah. But it's interesting that this came, and when you unfold the maps, they're really big. The ones that I had seen previously all came in a really nice handy dandy book. So I'm not exactly sure what, why the format was changed, but we do have the County Geological Atlas. It has a lot of information in it. But, like I said, there's a good part of it that I don't understand necessarily. I will get you on.
Thank you. I think our highway engineer should read that.
Is this one here?
Okay, anything else?
Thank you.
That's all of that. Unless you've got any questions.
Thanks, Tim.
Thanks, Tim.
Pardon me? I'll have a copy of the lease on Vicky's desk that he consigned, because it's got a...
Steve, come on up. Approval of contract for redesign of West Central Regional Juvenile Center Building.
Good morning.
Morning, Steve.
Last week I was here, I had a request to sign that, entering to an agreement with Michael J. Burns Architect Firm. And at that time, the board agreed to do that, but was concerned about not leaving an open-ended contract and looking for a specific number of hours. At that point, it was a little bit challenging, because we hadn't had the opportunity to talk with the Department of Corrections, and we wanted to make sure that there are clear expectations of moving forward, the board. He's aware that the board's very concerned with, with any type of estimate that would be before you, that it would be, well, it's an estimate as close as it, as it could potentially be. We, during that, during that twenty hours, the, the architect firm had the ability to make up some, some potential or initial drawings of, of changing the facility out. They forwarded that information to the Department of Corrections. Yesterday, we had the opportunity to spend about three hours on the phone with the Minnesota Department of Corrections Construction Department and also our Licensing Department. In reading the rules, the state statutes, there's, there's some, there's a lot of confusion, I guess, and, and the meeting provided some clear expectations for, for our architects. And so, the, the architect is requesting an additional twenty hours to continue the design. They're looking at needing to talk with an electrical, mechanical, and security engineers just to, to get that better piece, to have clear expectations and costs to bring back, to determine if we want to move forward. Right now, as of, as of this week, they've used, after our meeting yesterday, they've used about fourteen of the initial twenty hours. And so the goal, the goal on his end, he said yesterday, was with this twenty hours, the, the hope would be is that we'd be able to meet with the additional engineers and then have, have a, have an estimate that I could bring to the board to, to decide.
So we're looking at forty hours in total, they want further redesign.
I'd move approval.
Sir. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both aye and motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Thanks for coming back.
Steve, would you...
Okay, committee reports. Wayne? Brief committee reports.
Could you take Frank first, please?
Frank, go ahead.
Okay. Wednesday, I went up to the Wild Rice Watershed District. They, they had their meeting, and I was just interested to see what, I just wanted to find out about what, what they do, you know, and stuff like that. I mean, I guess I realize what they did, you know, but I just wanted to get acquainted, since we're gonna have to appoint a couple of people to that board, so. They just went through their usual business of doing given permits and stuff like that, so. And I see they're working with a lot of dollars, federal dollars, too, to get their projects done. Thursday, we had Metropolitan Council of Governments meetings, had a presentation by Great Rides, which is a bike, I'm sure you probably saw it on news, about the bike rides and stuff, the different stations they got, you know, and they were presenting what they, how you can get enrolled in it, you know, I guess you gotta pay an enrollment fee, then you gotta pay a fee to use of the bikes, too. So she had a bicycle there that she showed us how it's being used and stuff and all this, gave us a map of all the stations. Also on Thursday, I spent pretty much the whole day at Holly, along with, yesterday I spent another day at Holly with, with the Metropolitan Council of Governments. I'm on this Holly committee that they're looking to expand, not expansion, but what they could do with the city of Holly and stuff like that. So we interviewed different things. We were with the school board, we were with city employees, we were with landowners along Highway Ten, we held around five or six different sessions with different people. I was just, got a lot of ideas about what, what we can do in Holly. They're looking at sidewalk plans, they're looking at building annex and land, whatever. It was all kinds of different subjects, so. It was an interesting two days that I spent there, so. Those are my meetings.
Wayne?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On Tuesday, March seventeenth, local advisory council of adult mental health, general business, and then there was an excellent presentation by Denise Peterson of the Lost and Found Ministry located just off Main Avenue on Seventh Street, kind of kitty-corner from Trinity Lutheran Church. There are now several avenues of support for the recovery, for those in recovery and their families. And then there were agency reports from the Morehead Police Department, Place for Hope, which was formerly known as the Social Connection, Lakeland Mental Health Solutions, Clay County Social Services, TransM, which stands for Transitional Employment, report from those who attended the Day of the Hill on St. Paul, Day on the Hill, rather, at St. Paul. Thursday, March nineteenth, Lake Agassy Regional Library, a board meeting, general business, and we saw in two new board members, Mary Daly from the city of Morehead and Clayton Briggs from the city of Crookston. There's a presentation of the audit for night two thousand and fourteen. It was excellent, no concerns whatsoever, financial support, strategic planning update, and then the president's report from Paul Bersik, who represents Detroit Lakes. And that's on my committee reports.
Thank you. Kevin?
Let's see. I had, last week, Wednesday, our jail construction committee took a tour to Alexandria to see the jail in Alexandria. Very worthwhile trip. I had, I had seen that facility in its construction phase several years ago, and to see it now complete and operational, and then to compare that with, with what we have, it's, you right away see why, why the DOC is wanting us to upgrade. But we had several of us that went on that trip, and it looks like the, the whole schematic design of that is kind of what we're looking for. And then that after, afternoon, we also took a tour of the, of the new police law enforcement center. In discussing with them, for, for reasons not really to be discussed here, it ended up being that the county sheriff and the county sheriff's department and the Alexandria Police Department ended up in separate facilities in Alexandria. And it was really kind of told to us that if we can avoid that happening here, we should, we should really do that, that, that the functionality and the ability to work together has really been compromised by them being separated. So that was another good piece to learn from that. I think the law enforcement center is gonna be a different type of a situation to deal with, but I think it gave us, gave us a clearer picture to really help us move forward with our design plans for our jail. And hopefully something will be, something more will be coming very soon. So, that's all I have. Oh, and I did have the Greater Fargo Morehead Economic Development Association meeting on Thursday morning, and we actually met downtown in Fargo at Coco. And it's kind of another neat concept that's down there. It's a, it's a place that's designed for, where you can become a member and go in and access, for example, small entrepreneurs who don't have their own office space and things like that. They can go down there and they can rent a day a week, or they can rent it for all the time they want, and they have different types of settings in there from small groups to larger groups. And it was, it was encouraging, and it's, certainly, there's nothing that says that, that small entrepreneurs from the Morehead side couldn't use that as well, you know, but it's, and it's also a way where you can communicate with and get advice from other professionals. So it was a, kind of a neat concept. Then we had a regular business meeting, which didn't have a lot of action in the regular business meeting. It was a nice place to see, Grant might follow up on that, but.
Jenny?
Tuesday, I had the planning commission, just general business. We did approve a couple of mining permits for rural Clay County, and then also approved a, a new facility with bear poultry. And I just have to say that they have, the technology that goes into the covered storage and, and removal of the manure has, has really reduced a headache that they used to have, and they're doing a great job, so I appreciate that. Had a extension update, just the, the general quarterly update. They're doing great things over there, continuing to amp up for summer when they're, they're more busy. They did offer the position that they've been trying to fulfill, and they're waiting back to see about the acceptance. So I know Frank has, has commented on the concern with how that maybe be, is set up and, and why we haven't been able to fulfill that. And so they're hopeful that, that this will work out. I also had Lakes and Prairies Community Action this week. We just discussed some wage negotiations as we, they move forward with Mr. Peterson's retirement and with West Central. They're trying to get all their scales semi-similar and, and on the same level as with West Central, so it's, it's just a little less of a headache anyways. But they're continuing to do great things. I did want to say they are offering that, the VITA tax sites where they help prepare taxes for, for people that need guidance. And there was one instance where a young mom went in and hadn't done taxes for two years, because she didn't know how, and, and wasn't, was expecting to have to pay in, and they were able to, she got thirteen thousand back. So that's great that they're able to use that. And then yesterday, I had the Lakeland Mental Health, just general business. They're continuing to do great things, and like I mentioned earlier with public service, or when Rhonda and Kathy were here, they are really having difficulties with people not attending their appointments, and the no-shows are just through the rough. So they're worried about the productivity of all these employees that we have, if a lot of the time, they're kind of waiting for people to show. So they've got a good plan in, in, in place to, to kind of maybe evaluate that further, and then we'll talk about that next month. And then last night, I, I also had the new board member training at Lakeland. Last night, I went to the Buffalo Red Watershed. They approved some permitting projects, and one of their concerns was, as they continue to set precedence, they just want to reduce some headache down the road with getting written, neighbors that may be upstream or downstream, just having them write that they have been informed of the project, just so that the hearsay doesn't come. And then they did vote on the Buffalo Red, or the FM Diversion Authority budget last night, and they passed the money for the EIS, but that was it. So that is my report.
Okay. Let's see. I had Greater Fargo Morehead, EDC, like Kevin mentioned. They, that's interesting space there, like you said. I, I think it is available for anybody in the area that wants to utilize it for startup businesses. And we had some presentations by some people that were using it, which were interesting. And it, it's a national thing, this Coco, so there's one in Minneapolis, and now in Fargo, and all over the country where they do this. And they've been pretty successful in helping people with their businesses. And then I had an MRCC meeting from that Transportation Committee that I'm serving on, and of course, that's a major issue right now in St. Paul, on how they're going to fund all the transportation needs that we have around the state. And so, it's heating up, and it should get more interest in it in the next week or so. So, that was it for me. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a follow-up to your presentation this morning from Rhonda and Kathy. Rhonda did contact Vicky by email and said that the revenues that she had budgeted for the 2015 budget was three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. And if you notice on that page, the expected revenue was four hundred, in the time study was four hundred and seven. So that should cover that position.
Yeah. Then I would change my vote.
Okay. Well, we had talked about that earlier, and I know she expected the revenues to cover that. So that was a valid question of whether it was included or not, so good observation. The DISC training that you received that email on, I, I did get a flyer from Tony Smith, and I will pass that out to you. It just shows the time and what you plan to do. And she really encouraged you to, if you're going to attend that training, to fill out that DISC. And they charge us fifty bucks pop for each one of them, so I'll, I'll hand that out at the end here. Did meet with, in fact, Commissioner Wayland was there as well in regards to Edward Jones, and we were looking at some public-private partnerships or moving down the road with construction on a jail, and that really kind of fizzled. We'll certainly talk more in detail about that and bring that to the board. I did, I was along on the visit to the Douglas County Jail. We did have a meeting with Lakes and Prairies in regards to their transition as well, because of office space and how they're changing things. We will lose a little bit of rental space over there to them. I had a central admin managers meeting, covered just normal things, I guess. Met with the sheriff's office in regards to the upcoming sentence-to-serv contract that the state runs. They'll want to be talking with you about that a little bit when it comes in. Did have a conference call the other morning. It was the sheriff and Julie, the jail administrator, and myself talked with Scott Fettinger, Fettinger, Fettiger, Fettig, Fettig, from Klein McCarthy, referenced some continuation of design for the, for the jail. And we'll be talking about that in a couple of weeks and certainly bring a report to the board. I had attended a diversional administrative meeting last Friday morning. I had a county, regional county administrators meeting last Thursday as well, and then attended some educational things on street, street crimes, crimes in the community here. And we'll hear more about that later on, too. So, Mr. Chair, I conclude my own point.
Okay, anything else? Vicky?